All right, welcome everybody to the Los Gatos Town Council Meeting of April 16th, 2019. Can I get a roll call, please?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Sauc.
Here.
Councilmember Specter.
Here.
Councilmember Rennie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jensen.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Leonardis.
Here. And I just want to mention that the Vice Mayor is phoning in remotely this evening. So that's why you heard a voice, but you don't see a person. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Only if you give me a mug. This evening we have a couple presentations. The first presentation is being provided by West Valley Community Services and Sujitha Venkratiman is here to present on behalf of West Valley Community Services, which is an amazing organization that provides many services to those in need in our community and the surrounding communities of Santa Clara County. And please go ahead and let us know what you do and we will follow up with questions afterwards. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Mayor Leonardis, and thank you, Councilmember. Happy to be here. Los Gatos has been a partner and we've been providing services for 45 years. Today I have a quick presentation. I'm going to have some highlights from my last fiscal year and then I'll do a quick snapshot of what's happening in Los Gatos, what are some of the services we are offering, what changes we are seeing, and just to compare the six months of last year to six months of this year so you get a better perspective. So as, as you see, that our annual report highlight shows that we serve nearly 3,419 individuals who came to get critical family services through our doors in Cupertino and our mobile food pantry. So these included food pantry services, case management, people who came for the backpack program, the holiday program. So this is the all comprehensive service that they received. We distributed nearly 842,000 pounds of food that was given out. We had about 1,400 new individuals or families who came and accessed services for the first time. We saw an increase in our Gift of Hope program, which was about 608 individuals who asked, who participated in our gift program. This is given to families. This is more like an adopt a family program where we pair each family with a donor and the family gets the need met through the donor and through individual contribution. As you see, the mobile food pantry, we had about 1,011 individual access just the mobile food pantry. So the mobile food pantry in Los Gatos is at the Los Gatos Methodist Church and it is at the two affordable housing complexes that is on Winchester. So the Live Oak and the Villa Vassona residents access the food pantry through the Mid-Penn Housing Complex. Here are some highlights from the annual report. In October of 2017, we launched the Ride program, which is a senior transportation program. This provides transportation services to seniors 55 and older. We partner with SASE on this program. SASE is the agency that's working with Saratoga and Los Gatos, but we are partner. We work with the county to enhance this program. This has been very effective for seniors to get to the food pantry, to doctor's appointment, or any other need that they have, and they were relying on family and friends and neighbors to do that. So this has been very beneficial for our seniors. We expanded the mobile food pantry. As I said, in Los Gatos, we were at the Methodist Church, but now we are serving two of the Mid-Penn Housing Complex, and that's helped us to reach more residents in Los Gatos. We are also, we go up the hill and some, and serve clients who are living closer to Redwood Estates, but that doesn't come in the town jurisdictions, but we are still around Los Gatos and up in the unincorporated, and we serve, have you been able to serve more clients. The significant program highlights that we have seen is 53% increase in new clients, 14% increase in children served through the backpack program, which we call back to school. They get backpack and they have a shopping experience with a volunteer, and a 10% increase in clients who are participating in our Gift of Hope program. So we have some highlights from just Los Gatos. So if you look at our total annual number, 20% of the individual clients come from the town of Los Gatos. 18% of the new clients were from the town of Los Gatos. We served about 15 households through the financial emergency assistance, and about 135 households are accessing our mobile food services. This is just a year-to-year comparison. If you look, we took July to December of 2017 and compared it to July to December of 2018. As you see, this graph shows that we are seeing an increase in the number of clients, especially in the pantry, the mobile, and special programs. The unhoused number that you see are clients who are homeless. We saw a dip, but that's, I think, just because of the number. Typically, in the good weather time, we see fewer clients, and when the weather is bad and typically around this time after the holidays, we see an uptake of more homeless clients accessing services. This will also be interesting to see when the homeless count happened that West Valley contributed to volunteer hours, to see if that number changes for the number of homeless and unhoused in Los Gatos. I'm going to stop here to see if anybody has any questions as far as the report and the numbers are concerned, and then I want to end it with a client's story.
Councilmember Sauc.
If you could go back two slides, I think you mentioned the new clients, and I'm wondering whether you're, you're able to determine if they're new clients because they're new and newly discovered to West Valley, or new because of circumstances that caused them to require your services?
Both.
Both?
Both.
Do you have a breakdown of which?
So when we report new clients, that's that they came into our doors for the first time that year.
Okay.
So they are unique to that year, so they've never accessed services in the past because we have a database system that if they are coming back will let us know that they have accessed services in the past.
And a second follow-up question. Do you take a survey of how new clients learn of West Valley?
We've been trying to do that. Our surveys are anonymous, so we are adding a zip code question now so we can track that. And also, we changed something on our intake form to see where clients are coming from. I just looked at it for another report, so majority of them is a friend referral from another provider that they are working with. Maybe it's a hospital. In this case, it could be Ride, or they're working with an affordable housing provider and they know about us. So predominantly, that's coming up, but we are just, we've just put that in our intake to capture that, and we were not capturing it.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the past, there has been a request from the Ride program to have individuals from Los Gatos help with the program. Is that still a need, and if so, what?
SASE would be better to address that, but I can tell you about the overall program. Volunteer drivers are much needed, and it's been, that's the only way we can keep the cost low, so definitely that the need is there for the ride. And it also benefits a rider because when there is someone who lives in the community sometime of their similar age, then they are able to trust and be able to benefit from them. So both parties benefit from that opportunity. And it doesn't have to be senior, but anybody who has time available. This program really enhances the life of seniors, so has benefits across the board.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
All right.
So I'll end with a story. As you see, clients are coming to us from different walks of life, so I'll tell you a little bit about Lena's story. So Lena was working at a tech company, had a really stable job, and her job changed and she was contracted out for a little bit. And for six months, she was living on her savings. She applied for unemployment. The unemployment lasted her for another six months. So pretty much in that one year, she had gotten herself to the point of losing her housing, having to move out of Los Gatos and restart somewhere else. Lena heard about our program through a friend, and she felt like she should come and talk to someone. She didn't know that we, we provide financial assistance, so a case manager worked with Lena, looked at their budget, looked at her finances, and was able to give an area of service. So we were able to do back rent to keep her from becoming homeless or having to move out of the town where she grew up and had other things that were stabilized here. She started accessing our holiday program and our back to school program, and that really helped her to balance her budget. So this is a story of the clients that we are serving, really looking at avoiding displacement for kids in school, making sure that families are not getting into homelessness because they're not able to pay rent.
All right. Ms. Venkratiman, thank you so much for coming in this evening and sharing that story and making aware that there are services out there for all types of communities in the Bay Area, whether it's Los Gatos or Cupertino or others. And these services are broad and available to those in need. And if you could share with, because there's so many people watching on TV, how somebody can contact you, the best way to be contacted to begin to use your services.
So our website is www.wcommunitieservices.org. Our phone number is 408-255-8033. Like I said, the mobile food pantry comes to Los Gatos Methodist Church on Thursday afternoon, and on Friday afternoon is at Mid-Penn Apartment Complex, and they could go there and we will do an intake right then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
All right, our next presentation are some of our fine students who will be reading some poems for us, and I'd like to invite up Ms. Joanne Talisforay to present the students. By the way, it's Poetry Month. Los Gatos is celebrating Poetry Month every April, and we are always represented by our fine students in the community, as well as Joanne being the leader of that.
Well, somewhat. I consider myself an advocate for the arts here in town, and this was just something that delightfully fell into my lap. But it's my pleasure this year to present our selected poets from Fisher Middle School's eighth grade classes and English classes and Spanish class. The poems you hear tonight were selected by the Fisher eighth grade English and Spanish teams of teachers at, at Fisher Middle School. Special thank you, though, to Julia Goterman, Grace Donatelli Sordo, and John Nakamura. The tradition of poetry in the chambers began a long time ago, about 10 years ago, I think. And at that time, who knew it was going to be a tradition all the way to today? So the eighth graders were, the teachers got together and decided that a really wonderful theme would be "Where I'm From." What a wonderful place to be from, Los Gatos. So the, tonight, we're going to be hearing these students and what they considered when they wrote these poems. How do you know when you are from a place, and what roots you to that place, and what does Los Gatos mean to me? And that's what these students considered, and I hope tonight, when you're hearing them with, read their poems, you might think about that yourself. So without any further ado, and they will introduce themselves, but I'm very proud that we have these students with us tonight.
Hello, my name is Siobhan Barr, and my inspiration for this poem is that oftentimes on Sundays, my family and I goes down to Los Gatos for the farmer's market. So the name of my poem is "A Perfect Town for a Perfect Sunday." Heading down from the mountains, surrounded by regal cliffs, where wildlife roam and colossal evergreen scale. The bright greens of the alluring mountains and deep blues of the skies make for quite a wondrous surprise. Continuing down, the reservoir appears, so serene in its simplicity. Where snakes like to slither and birds like to bob, where pups like to prowl and cubs tend to coo. Four minutes away, a mystical town greeted by the pitter-patter of gentle fountains and by the incredible smell of burgers grilling, your senses are pleased. A brisk Sunday morning, the farmer's market stands, appearing in the plaza for four hours on end. Fresh produce and honeys, cooking crepes make mouth water. Blossoming flowers greet the sniffers, bright colors please the eyes. Divine delicacies graze the stands. Continuing down, a place to relax and paint some pottery, express your creativity. And then a place to unwind, an old movie theater with the newest hits. Moving onward, getting slightly sweaty, a cold sweet treat to chill on a warm day, some creamy gelato shall save the day. Dozens of places to fulfill one's longings, burgers, pizza, pasta, sushi, oh my, anything that meets the eye. This brilliant town, so small, so sweet, a lovely package of sparkly treats, a perfect thing for a lovely day out. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mika Schreman, and my inspiration for this poem was to show not only the beauty in Los Gatos, but also how the past meets the present.
Hi, my name's Allison Dandrand, and I'm reading Mika's poem line by line into English.
Dia en el presente.
Day in the present.
El sol en mi cara.
Sun on my face.
Amigos a mi lado.
Friends by my side.
Este es un espacio lleno de diversión.
This is a fun-filled space.
Ando con un paso largo y feliz.
I walk with a long, happy stride.
Mi relo dice una y uno.
My watch reads 13:01.
Quiero comida en la punta de mi lenguna.
I crave for food at the tip of my tongue.
La calle principal está aquí.
Main street is there.
Respiro el ayer salado.
I breathe in the salty air.
Veo el parque lleno de bancos.
I see the park full of booths.
El agua moja a los jóvenes.
Water spraying all of the youth.
Ando para florecer.
I walk to bloom.
Mientras mi mente se enfoca.
As my mind starts to zoom.
Me doy cuenta del pasado.
I realize the past.
Pienso qué fue lo último que había aquí.
Think of what was here last.
Un lugar para muchos.
A place for many.
Todo está completo.
Everything is out of plenty.
El pasado y el presente se mezclan.
Past and present blend together.
Espero que este hogar continúe para siempre.
I hope this home stays forever.
Hi, I'm Jordan Chan. I was inspired to write this poem by, of course, the town and some of my favorite places here. It's called "Down the Boulevard." The sight of Vassona Lake sparkling under the shiny sun, your never-ending shelves of books greet me when I arrive. The sound of children's laughter like that of so many angels or buzzing blossom hillbees, your furry friends welcome me to the town. The smell of grape bear coffee and the intoxicating aromas of fresh baked menresa bread beg me to stay here forever. The taste of creamy gelato and waffles piled high with whipped cream from Los Gatos Cafe embrace me in a warm hug. The feelings of happiness and comfort, of contentment and joy, make you home.
Thank you so much. Those poems were absolutely wonderful, and they made me hungry. And it just describes not only the beauty of Los Gatos and all these wonderful places we enjoy on a daily basis, but the talent of the young students in our incredible schools, eighth graders. This is amazing. So one more round of applause. I'm going to come forward and we'll do a photo. First is our consent calendar. Does any member of council wish to pull an item from our consent calendar this evening? Seeing none, does anyone in the public want to pull anything from consent? I see none. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve our consent calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we have... Mayor, we'll have to do a roll call for all the votes tonight. Okay. So we will go ahead and start with Councilmember Sauc.
Aye.
Councilmember Specter.
Aye.
I am an aye. We have Vice Mayor Jensen.
Aye.
And we have Councilmember Rennie.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. We will move forward with verbal communications. I have one card. These are for items which are not on our agenda, and the speaker is Ginbar Ketema.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Ginbar Ketema. I'm with Verizon Wireless. I just, you know, we've been working for the past few months with your town staff, particularly staff in the Department of Public Works, and so I want to thank them for their efforts on the small cell agreement that we've been working on. And just recently, on Friday, we were notified that small cell design guidelines were issued by the town published online, and so we look forward to working with staff on revising that document. As it stands today, it's not in compliance with state and federal regulations, and so in order for us to be able to deploy small cell technology such as 4G and 5G in the town, we hope that we can continue working with staff on updating that document such that it is in compliance with the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ketema. So you're already in contact with our staff?
Yes, we are.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no other cards, so we will close verbal communications and we will go on to our presentations. So first is item number nine, where we will be considering the adoption of a resolution of the town of Los Gatos to annex number nine into the Santa Clara County Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. In 2003, the U.S. Congress passed what was known as the Healthy Forest Restoration Act, and that legislation was passed due to the recognition of the declining health of our national forests and then the incident of wildfire that occurred because of that. One of the elements of the Healthy Forest Restoration Act was the recommendation that jurisdictions adopt what they refer to as CWPPs, or Community Wildfire Protection Plans. One of the reasons this was recommended is they saw that there needed to be greater collaboration between federal agencies, local agencies, and all the other agencies that would be required to respond in the event of a wildfire. In 2016, the county of Santa Clara, through the efforts of the county fire department, did establish a draft CWPP. During the drafting of that document, they also created annexes for the local jurisdiction since collaboration is one of the goals of these documents. For the town of Los Gatos, that's what's referred to as Annex Number Nine, and so the item before you tonight is a recommendation to adopt that annex into the county's wildfire protection plan. And one of the other positives of adopting this, not only to have better collaboration between all our agencies, which also identify different types of fuel mitigation plans, is it also makes us eligible for grant funding in the future. One of the elements of the federal legislation was that adoption of these will give you priority status when it comes to grant funding for various and assorted wildfire mitigation plans. With us tonight in the audience is Chief Bowden of the Fire Department and Assistant Chief Justice. They are both available for any questions as are staff.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Does anyone on council have questions at this time? Seeing none, I don't have any speaker cards on this item. Would you please come up? And if you have not completed a card, just please come forward and state your name for
Hi, good evening. My name is Patty Cieslaw. I'm the Executive Director of the Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council. We're a nonprofit organization that's committed to helping reduce the risk of wildfire in Santa Clara County. And I'm really pleased with all the work that county fire did in putting together the CWPP. It's a tremendous document, and I, I think that the annex for your town is particularly good in identifying the wildfire risks because you do back right up to the wildland, and it, it is actually a pretty serious matter. So I wanted to let you know about the Fire Safe Council. We are partners with county fire, CAL FIRE, Santa, Saratoga Fire District. We have funding from a number of resources, including federal grants, state grants. Today, we were just awarded a grant from the California Climate Investments Act, so we'll be receiving $600,000 for escape route projects and evacuation preparation. And we'll also be working with CAL FIRE along Highway 17 to do wildfire prevention project, a shaded fuel break along the side of the highway. So you're, you're one of the early adopters of the CWPP in Santa Clara County. I want to thank you and look forward to working with you.
All right, thank you. I have a question for you.
Yes.
And I know we met, we met at Senator Bell's Fire Safety Event about a month ago, and you mentioned your partners with Saratoga. I'm assuming you're partners with Los Gatos already, and you've been in communication with our staff?
Well, so we receive local funding from only two municipal governments, so... Well, so we receive local funding from only two municipal governments. So Saratoga and Palo Alto provide funding for the Fire Safe Council. So although we do work in your city, we're not actually funded by Los Gatos.
Okay.
So it'd be nice to change that.
I'm sure, you know, as I met you a month ago, that was the first I've heard of your organization. So I'm glad that you came in tonight and were able to speak to the council. And hopefully, in the future, you'll be considered, how can I say it?
We're, you know, we do have funding from other resources. We do serve the town. You know, one of the things that you can look at is some of the action items in the CWPP might be best performed by the County Fire Safe Council. So as a nonprofit organization, we operate at relatively low cost.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. All right, that closes the public hearing on this item. Does anybody have questions for the chief or the assistant chief or Mr. Andrews or anybody else? Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This isn't anybody else's question. The documentation that we received as part of this item had two reports. One was generated, the larger one was generated in 2016. And the smaller one, the annex, was generated relative to Los Gatos in April of 2019. So the first question is, some of the items specifically apply to Los Gatos. Are those items, action items, have they been completed, specifically the ones from 2016? And if not, are there dates and dates when they are going to be completed?
I'll start, and then please, Assistant Chief Justice, jump in. So the annex, which was actually drafted back around 2016 also, but as we started to engage the process, we recommended some edits to it. And those were approved by the County Fire, and so April 19 is the date on that. And then if Assistant Chief Justice would like to add anything else about the remainder of the questions?
So I can. As far as the main body of the CWPP, which is really the overarching strategic plan countywide, was finished, completed in late 2016. We are putting together a steering committee currently, and that steering committee really focuses on County Fire, CAL FIRE, the Fire Safe Council, and a few other major players to readdress the strategic plan overall, but also trying to get together to be able to do each one of the annexes, so each one of the jurisdictions in the city or in the county, to actually do public hearings again in their communities to get outreach into what are your concerns, what are your issues, and how do you think you might be able to mitigate it. The CWPP has to be done in a public forum. It's one of the requirements. So we never did this in a vacuum. It's a matter of putting it out there to the public, of reaching out and asking for what do you want to see out of this. And we want to do it again, because in the last few years, since 2016, we've seen back-to-back years of the most destructive wildfires in California's history. That has raised an awareness to an acute level, to where people want to engage again. And we want to accept that to happen.
Thank you. And following up on that, when I look at the document here, it has some, and right now I'm looking at the chart, it has some items that are done by the county, by other organizations, but some done specifically by the Town of Los Gatos. So as a member of the council for the Town of Los Gatos, what I'm looking for is some guidance or direction. Is there something that we should specifically be doing? Is there something that we should specifically be directing be done in order to help address potential fires?
I'll start once again, and then please either the chief or assistant chief. The items that were identified here, some of them are already kind of works in progress. And I just want to assure the council that these are all recommendations. These aren't necessarily absolute commitments, but these are areas of best practice that have been identified, and that would be helpful for a community like ours that is in what we refer to as a wooie, or a wildland urban interface. And so some of the items here, you'll see there's also kind of timeframes. Some of them are longer term in nature, and others are ones that we can address right now. For instance, one of the ones that actually lists the Town of Los Gatos specifically was a broader concept of how do we do better, you know, public outreach and public communication. And while here, the goal addresses newspaper, what we acknowledge is, we don't necessarily have a newspaper that we can distribute, but we can help create information relevant to our town and relevant to wildfire preparation that we can disseminate through other channels, whether they're our own social media channels or any of the other media outlets available in town. And then I believe the chief in the report that you recently gave also had some recommendations for future collaboration.
Yes. So I want to address it just a little bit differently. First, you asked what the town should be doing. You've already started. And staff has already been working with County Fire on the evacuation plan. We have started our community wildfire preparedness workshops. The first went in Los Gatos. That was last week. So the effort has already begun in the Town of Los Gatos with staff working conjunction with County Fire. There's certainly more work to do, because as I like to say, you have this strategic plan, which is the CWPP. Now we need to move into operationalizing it. And so the referral, which I believe you have in your packets as well, was the culmination of about four months of staff time to really bring up the awareness that this is a multi-jurisdictional issue. Fire and, quite frankly, any large disaster does not respect jurisdictional boundaries. So we need to be better at coordinating all the various stakeholders and ensure that we're working collaboratively towards mitigation, because you can address it on the front end, or you can address it with response. Right now, we're focusing on what can we do on the prevention mitigation side of the house. And we've been diving into that very deeply. Also, in the report, there is a work plan for the county to establish a wildfire working group within the County Fire Marshal's Office. And I believe that's an important foundational piece, that my second report to the board on funding will be coming up very soon. So any support would be greatly appreciated for that. Because I do believe it's important, with all the stakeholders involved in this issue, there needs to be a coordinating body to help all the jurisdictions, especially when you're talking about grant management, seeking grants, operationalizing the work to be done, and having that one clearinghouse that can coordinate the open space partners, the private landowners, the local jurisdictions, the fire districts. And it just goes on and on and on. And so that's kind of the framework of it, kind of a long answer, but you have already started in the town, and we look forward to continuing this process.
Thank you. And I would just say for you and for the staff, if there's anything that this council specifically needs to do to start something rolling, I would look forward to hearing it.
Thank you. And I'll just add on to the chief's comments. He mentioned staff's working with the county on a couple other fronts. We're currently part of a working group with the County Office of Emergency Management, because they're putting together a countywide wildfire annex, and we're part of a working group there. And then the chief also mentioned that we've been working together to try and develop what we're referring to as a wildfire evacuation assessment. Best practice no longer stipulates that you can point to one route and say that's the route to take, because you actually don't know until the incident commanders in the field observe what's happening and say, okay, this is going to be the best point of ingress and egress. And so we are working not only with County Fire, but with the Office of Emergency Management to develop what will probably end up being a template for the other jurisdictions in the area of developing what we refer to as a wildfire evacuation assessment plan.
Councilmember Seok?
Thank you. Similar questions to Councilmember Specter. I guess I wanted to better understand how this actually, who's responsible for implementing and executing? And it sounds like it's a mutual effort on both parts. And so I guess, as a council member, do I just, am I just assured that staff and County Fire are going through these different elements? And throughout the work plan, they're just being incorporated into the activities that you're doing? Is there anything that we need to specifically flag in terms of our budgeting process? I'm trying to just better understand what else we should be doing, as Councilmember Specter says, to make sure that this is not an annex plan that just sits on a desk somewhere and that we're constantly revisiting it?
Thank you, council member. And once again, I'll start. And please, I think one of the actual intentions and goals of a CWPP is, for lack of a better phrase, to acknowledge the problem. It's kind of the starting point to make sure that you start to build that type of collaboration, and you start to identify what you think the issues are. And then I can assure you that moving forward, staff will continue to work with County Fire and any other entity that can help us as a community prepare better. Some preparation may in the future require some type of a monetary commitment, you know, when you start to look at some of the ways you could eradicate fuels. Some of the preparation is just staff time being devoted to working with groups to develop, you know, an evacuation assessment plan. But we have started, I would say, in earnest in the past year, really focusing more on the wildfire aspect of, you know, emergency preparedness, because it is an area that we can actually identify. You know, in the event of an earthquake, we can't really identify where and how that will occur. We can look right out our windows and see the hillsides and know that we have an area that we need to prepare for. And so we've been working on several fronts. I mentioned several of them, but I'm sure perhaps the chief or the assistant chief would like to speak to others.
It's a very good question. And let me rephrase your question a little bit. Part of your concern, a lot of concern, ends up being who's going to fund and finance things. Tonight is the first step to be able to move towards what you've probably read about in the newspaper, which is there's opportunities in the state of California to grant fund projects. The first box on any document that you want to do when it comes to wildfire grant funding is, do you have an adopted CWPP? And if you check no, thanks for coming. You can go to the back of the line. The purpose of why we're here is, we do recognize that your citizens and fire folks ourselves recognize there are concerns and issues here. Is the next is, as the fire chief said, is to operationalize it. And that's part of what we've done with the County Board of Supervisors, is plant the seed that we need one overarching coordinated office to run this through for all of the jurisdictions. That will end up kind of like being a grant clearinghouse. And working also with Patty's group at the Fire Safe Council is that you have to look at the grant funding work that has been done through the Fire Safe Council in the last 15, 20 years. There's more work here in this county to be done than CAL FIRE can handle or the Fire Safe Council can handle. And so together, what we're trying to do is put together a wildfire team, really, to work collaboratively across the entire county, across all of the jurisdictions, to be able to actually put boots on the ground to do mitigation projects. And that will be coordinated really between the grant writing as far as what's capable, finding the right partners to hook up with, and to be able to fund the mitigation to get it done.
And let me just add that when we considered our strategic priorities back in January, wildfire protection was one of the priorities. So on our ordinance list is to craft new regulations to guide private property owners and proper vegetation management. And next month, you will be considering our operating budget, which we'll have a couple of proposals for your consideration, again, in terms of what the town can do proactively to address emergency preparedness and wildfires specifically.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you. Again, and thank you all. I guess my concern is that it's April going into May, and I can appreciate organizing, getting together groups, getting funding. But I just want to be sure that to the extent that we need to do something between, before that or while that is going on, because of the timeframe that we're currently in, I'm just hoping that everybody understands that we're here, ready to go.
Right. Any other comments or questions? Vice Mayor, are you okay?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to echo the thanks to the Fire Department and our town for being ready for this. It's really important. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Seok?
One more. I know on April 25th, I see our police chief, we have a CERT meeting. And I know several of those that have just been recently certified are very eager to do something. Are there, as you start looking through this, are there ways to, I guess, engage and train and utilize these volunteers that are newly CERT certified and eager to take on responsibilities?
Thank you, Councilmember Pete. The Senate Chief of Police. Yes, indeed. As you know, Captain D'Antonio and Sergeant Field have been working, developing our CERT program. Again, as you know, they are, the meeting, the 25th, is actually to incorporate CERT and use a neighborhood watch model to maybe expand. So a lot of it has to do with just getting community interest and getting people aware of what the problem is. From there, they have, you know, a series of trainings planned. I would say, in working with Chief Bowden and Assistant Chief Justice, I'm, I think they're really on the right track. They've got some great ideas. This is a big project. And I'd like to say, Councilmember Specter, that we're going to be ready for the wildfire season. You know, I think we're going to be ready as we can, but this is a very big project. But I said I'm very comforted that we're on the right track, and I think we're going to get there. It is going to take some commitment, going to take staff time, it's going to take some, you know, monetary commitment. But I think the plan that they have, the ideas that they have, I mean, they've got some pretty unique innovative approaches to how we're going to deal with evacuations, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we're on the right track. And I think the CERT and this neighborhood watch collaboration is going to be helpful in terms of developing awareness of the problem and what people can do to help out.
I would just add to that, this council actually last year took action with two budgetary items. One was a $50,000 commitment for enhanced, what we refer to as NICPs, our Neighborhood Incident Command Post. And that was a commitment to the CERT program that you just mentioned. And Captain D'Antonio and Sergeant Field have been making amazing strides with that group to not only solidify the existing folks within it, but find new recruits. You also made a commitment of $50,000 to enhance communication infrastructure in the AOC. We have three projects that are currently almost coming to fruition and culmination. One touches the actual AOC itself to have better just kind of situational awareness within the AOC. Another touch is a satellite phone, which is a conduit for us to make sure that we can always have communications regardless of cell towers. And then another project is actually being run by our Aries-Racis folks, and they are basically creating a parallel internet system between ourselves and directly to the county AOC. So you have already started taking steps towards emergency preparedness, but each year, we want to keep building more and more. Between now and June, you mentioned the wildfire season. It's not a coincidence that the county team wants to conclude their wildfire annex by June. In parallel with that, I hope to be close to concluding our wildfire evacuation assessment plan by June. You know, there's a lot of folks who are targeting that wildfire season. And I think all of this is just going to make us much more prepared in the event that we do have anything that occurs.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Rennie?
Just one small question. So, things that get reported on and measured tend to get done or improved. So what is our plan to report on our progress? Are we going to report on it yearly, bi-yearly? How do we kind of, you know, that sort of makes you remember, yeah, I got to make some progress on that if we have a report coming up. So what is our plan to track this?
I'll defer to the chief, because he is currently trying to get the budgetary authority to create kind of a centralized system within Fire. I will say that we are already currently part of what's referred to as a local hazard mitigation plan, an LHMP. That does have annual reporting requirements. And the LHMP, similar to the CWPP, are both things that will help us with grant funding in the future. My guess is, we will try to put together some type of an annual review of some type. But once again, I'll defer to the chief on that.
So in conjunction with our monthly report that we give to the City Manager's Office, we can incorporate, I would say, probably maybe a biannual or even yearly report to incorporate some of that. But I also think it's important to identify some of the things that have already taken place that really do benefit not just the town, but the entire operational area. So Santa Clara County Fire, I sit as the operational coordinator, area coordinator for the entire county. And one of the things that they put into place last year, the state put into place as a trial, was pre-positioning funding, 25 million. We exercised that and stood up five additional engines that the state paid for that were centralized here in the Los Gatos-Campbell area in a red flag warning. Governor Newsom's office has solidified that funding ongoing for pre-positioning. Governor Newsom's office has solidified that funding ongoing for pre-positioning. So, as red flag events come in, I'm ordering up resources. The state is paying for those with grant funding for the state for the operational side. Additionally, County Fire has resourced up tremendously in the last three years. Most of those resources, many of those resources, sit in the Los Gatos-Saratoga corridor, specifically new Type 6 engines, new Type 3 engines, a water tender in Quito's area, and then the two station rebuilds that are going on right now to house more additional resources. On the response side, there's been a tremendous lift in investment into the system. And then, on the grant side of it, I think, just for perspective, SB 901 Dodd, last year, made available 200 million per year for the next five years for local fuel mitigation. So, there's a tremendous amount of interest. There's a tremendous amount of support from the current administration, but we have to create that coordinating body to help facilitate getting those grants and bringing them in and operationalizing it, and then to report out on the work. We'd be happy to do that on a basis that would make sense for the City Manager's Office.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions? Want to thank again the chief and the assistant chief for coming in this evening, and we look forward to getting a motion on this from council. I can go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution in the staff report. Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Opposed?
Yes. I was getting there next.
I'll just say aye.
I was going, okay. Councilmember Sauck.
Aye.
Councilmember Specter.
Aye.
I am an aye. Vice Mayor Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Rennie.
Aye.
Okay, so that's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. And Ms. Pervetti.
Thank you. Thank you for taking my manager matters out of order this evening. Tonight, I would like to recognize the photography that hangs on the walls. This is the photography of Ken Benjamin, who recently passed away just earlier this year, and it's all beautifully displayed here in our council chambers. Ken's wife, Janice, is with us this evening. Thank you. And she tells us that he was always aware of the beauty of his surroundings, the whimsy of life, and the importance of community. The back wall shows Los Gatos. Ken and Janice created this exhibit in 2017 to show at Dolce Spazio and Los Gatos Coffee Roasting. It represents 30 years of photography. In addition to these items, there are four more portfolios of Ken's photos of Los Gatos that will be on display at an upcoming reception. The south wall showcases a sense of community around the world. From the canyons of Arizona, we see a Navajo woman tending her sheep, to Portugal, where men sit on a bench and share a laugh in the morning sun. Janice calls the north wall "the wall of whimsy" as it shows a portrait of Ken smiling, camera in hand, along with the other photographs that always put smiles on our faces. The Benjamin family thanks the council for honoring Ken. A fellow photographer once said of Ken, "He has a good eye. He sees what others would pass by." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pervetti, and we will be having a reception coming up. And when is that date?
We are looking at Friday, May 10th, at 6:00 PM in these council chambers. The public and the council, of course, are welcome to join us.
We look forward to that, and thank you very much for the photography. It's beautiful. We will be moving on to item number 10, which is the report on our downtown maintenance and beautification ideas. Mr. Morley.
Thank you very much. Quick report, covering some of the great things that we have going on in downtown and identifying some areas for future improvement, for your considerations and discussion. Want to talk first about one of the big things we hear on a regular basis, which is about power washing the sidewalks and sweeping the municipal parking lots. We do this on a regular basis. Unfortunately, with our downtown and the activity, no sooner do we get it cleaned than it's dirty again, so a lot of work goes into it, and certainly some potential need for improvements there. We will be bidding this program in the next month or so, so we'll have new pricing on that. We'll include pricing for expanded service, so should the council, through the budget process, wish to expand services here, that's something we can consider. I will say that the age of the sidewalks does provide a little bit of a challenge, because it tends to hold the dirt a little bit more than a newer sidewalk, as the fine parts of the concrete have washed away over time. In terms of trash and recycling, a number of years ago, we had a big challenge with trash and recycling, with overflowing trash cans. Our model had been for our waste taller to empty those cans on a daily basis. Unfortunately, they were unable to do that over the weekends in some of our busiest times, and so, we ended up, especially on the weekends, with overflowing trash cans. So, we stepped back and changed the model, brought in a separate company to do the work, do some additional work for us, and they do the emptying of the trash cans and the recycling cans on the weekends, and they also do an additional emptying of the recycling cans on Wednesdays during the week. This seems to have addressed the problem outside of a sporadic overflow here and there that we tend to address on a, on a sort of a complaint-type basis. We did have one unique area in front of the post office where, in spite of our efforts on that one, it continued to overflow, the trash can did, that is. So, we added a separate trash can, and that seems to have mitigated that as well. We do try to keep a recycling bin next to every one of our trash cans, especially in the downtown core. That's been a big move over the last number of years, as we've increased the recycling cans, and that seems to be a success as well. It relieves some of the pressure from the trash cans and helps us do the right thing by increasing our recycling, so that's been a benefit for us. You might have noticed that we did some tree trimming in the downtown this week in our regular scheduled tree trimming. We try to trim throughout the town. The downtown gets good attention with that as well. That helps to keep the trees off the buildings and helps to keep them vibrant and growing. Our tree lights also were a challenge for us a number of years ago. We, last time we redid this contract, we increased the service so that we require the contractor to come in at the beginning of every week, on Monday or Tuesday of every week. So, you may notice during the day that the lights are on, and that's because they've been turned on, so we can go through and actually service them. This seems to have fixed the challenge that we run into, which is some abuse that happens to the lights over the weekend, especially as the bars lit out in the early morning hours, and the repairs early in the week keep the lights on for the rest of the week, and we do that on a repetitive basis. A costly effort, but I think one that's well worth it to keep those lights on. Planner boxes have undergone a little bit of change over the last several months. The beautification committee had done an amazing job in keeping the planner boxes going for us for a long time, but as the time passed and interest by the volunteers who adopted those planner boxes started to wane, it became more of an effort to control. So, over the last couple of months, town staff took that back on as a work that we would do. We would play the heavy hand and have the conversations with the volunteers and get them to work with us. We also, at the same time, implemented a voucher program where we provide a voucher for Summer Winds Nursery, so that the volunteers can go get plant material on a fairly easy basis. So, we're encouraging the, a little more increase in turnover on the planner boxes with that. And then, ultimately, if we need to, we can take over the planting of the boxes ourselves in-house and make that happen. I will say, the work of the beautification committee hasn't stopped. They're a tremendous asset and do a ton of work in the downtown with their monthly meetups, taking care of all the things that we miss during the course of business, including sweeping the little corners that we have a tough time getting to, doing, pulling weeds and planting bulbs and things like that. So, it's a great asset for us to have the beautification committee providing that additional help. We couldn't do it without the volunteer help that we see. We did price out an option for changing out the planner boxes on a more regular basis with annual color, so four time a year change out. The cost for that was pretty expensive, so we did not bring it forward as a council recommendation. The cost in the memo is at $65,000 a year. It's a lot of work and an expensive endeavor for that particular project. In the town, in terms of street sweeping, we sweep the town on a regular basis. The downtown gets a sweeping every Friday, so we try and hit it every Friday with some exceptions. If it's raining, it doesn't do as much good to sweep, so we miss those days. And if we have a mechanical failure with our one street sweeper, then we miss that as well. But other than that, we hit the downtown on a really regular basis, knowing that it's an important area and has higher traffic. So, that's a big deal for us. And we also sweep the parking lots and the garage on a monthly basis, so those get attention from that perspective. We do have a number of unmet needs that I've identified in the report for you. We acknowledge that there's some landscaping areas, especially in the parking lots, that have long been neglected and could use a little bit of TLC. The deck on the parking garage leaks, so on a rainy day, or the day after a rainy day, we get quite a few drips on the inside of the parking garage, and that's something that's on our list of things to address. And repainting streetlight poles has been a subject that comes up on a regular basis, and that's something that definitely needs some attention long-term. We've been working with PG&E on the annoying clanking of the vaults that are in the sidewalk. It's been a hit-and-miss effort on, in terms of getting permanent repairs done. We're meeting with them again tomorrow and hope to encourage them to replace the vault lids that are there. So, we'll give up a little bit of convenience during some construction as those lids are removed and new ones are put in, and hopefully, we'll get them on board to do that work for us in the fall. And then, finally, we had considered also proposing to the council adding a maintenance position that would be dedicated to the downtown, probably on a part-time basis, with the idea of being responsive on a moment-by-moment basis, so having somebody that could come in in the morning with a scrubber, a piece of equipment that looks like a giant vacuum cleaner, that they would walk behind, that would wash the sidewalks. They could come in and do the weed pulling and pick up the messes. When we saw the budget forecast and the operating budget ongoing, it didn't seem like a viable option, so that's not going to be in the proposed budget at this time, unless the council wishes to discuss it and provide different direction as we work through our budget process. With that, the ongoing costs for the work in the downtown are significant. We try to pay attention to that and balance that with the needs, and certainly open for supporting the conversation tonight as the council discusses the needs of the downtown.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morley. Do we have questions? Councilmember Sauck.
Just one of the things that was brought up on Sunday, what's the status of the flags on our poles? I know that we were looking to invest in the, in having a program, and so, just curious what the status of that is and when we can start to see some of that, some of those banners, the banners. Thank you.
Yes. The town is open for business. In fact, we have an application that we're processing now with the Chamber of Commerce, who's proposing to put banners in the downtown area. And the way our program works is that we are open to a lot of different opportunities. We will also be doing banners as part of Music in the Park on Main Street, so we're hopeful that we'll be able to see the Chamber's banners shortly, and that you'll be seeing the Music in the Park ones shortly as well.
And are there, I guess, default banners that we would use if there's no specific sponsor or specific event that's in play for that season?
We don't have those now. As you know, last summer, we tried to celebrate Los Gatos, which was, seemed very well received. So, we are working up some new ideas, but we don't have them ready yet for the summer season.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
No, no questions. Sorry.
All right. We will open it up to the public hearing. I see one card coming forward. If anybody wishes to speak, please bring forth a card at this time. Ms. Summers, you're on deck.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm Catherine Summers with the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce, and yes, those street pole banners are coming. But I did want to say, today I had an interesting meeting. We had a property owner business improvement district meeting, so we're trying to get that rolling along, and one gentleman in the group asked, you know, what is Los Gatos and what's the brand of Los Gatos? And it was really interesting, because we all kind of paused and we thought, you know, we really don't do a lot of branding of this town. And tonight at this meeting, it's interesting, because of course, this eighth-grade poet sort of told us what Los Gatos is all about, and then the photography on the back wall does, but all of that does take a lot of maintenance and a lot of care, which is why I'm so excited that this is actually on your agenda tonight. And as you saw, I sent an email yesterday, which was to the extent of, yes, yes, do everything that you're already doing and then do more. And hopefully someday, if this P-Bid actually does form, that group, the assessed, the assessments will add up to some money that we can add to whatever it is that you are already all doing, but that's a little ways off. So, in the meantime, I think it is really important to keep what you're, keep doing what you're doing, and then, in your next round of budgeting, perhaps add in a little bit more. For example, the unmet needs that Matt identified, I think, I think really now is the time where we could look at those parking lots and look at the planter boxes that are in those that just have gone to the wayside for the last couple of years. I mean, when people come to town, they park, and that's their first impression is in those parking lots. So, whether it's better signage or nicer plantings, or, I mean, I know sometimes these things seem so silly, but they really do leave that impression when people leave town, or even if they're here, if they're locals and they come down, they're just, it gives them some pride, I think, in what, in their town. The street pole banners, for sure. I think you mentioned the default banners. I think it would be really important to have a set of four or five. I've looked into a lot of other towns, and when nonprofits don't come forward with banners to hang, the town has a series seasonally to put up in that case, and they just do it. Of course, I always refer to Lafayette, but Danville, you know, a lot of those towns actually have those default banners. The planter boxes, of course, that's one of my pet peeves. I think it's worth it to put the money in for seasonal change outs on those. I think you really, I mean, that beautification committee is great. They've really come around and have been inspired with the new, with some of the new plans and the vouchers that they have at Summer Winds, but to change those out on a seasonal basis, I think would make a real impact, and that way, we'd have those eighth graders coming back and giving us more pounds year after year.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Summers. Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that the business improvement district is a process, and you're looking to 2020, but given the fact that the process has, you know, junctures, do you feel as though you're moving forward in an expeditious way within this juncture?
Ooh. That's a loaded question. I think we made some headway today, and I think we identified some of the top priorities. Finally, the, you know, it was a group of about 12 of us today. We are having a little bit of a challenge of getting more property owners invested into the idea of forming a P-Bid, to be perfectly honest. So, we have a little work there ahead of us. The ones we do have are pretty engaged, and so, I think there is a strong possibility it will come to fruition. It's going to take some work.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any more speakers on this topic? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We'll move on to discussion about this subject, and I will just say, I was happy to put this on the agenda this evening, because I, of course, get a lot of requests for the cleanliness of the sidewalks, and a couple of times a year, folks have mentioned those metal covers that Mr. Morley was talking about in the sidewalk when you walk across them. They go, "Kun-kun," and they give you, make your heart jump. So, I'm looking forward to PG&E putting some kind of fix to those, moving forward. It seems pretty sensible. I was encouraged with the numerous recommendations in the report. These are more things than I had thought of, which is fantastic. I look at, especially after this weekend, we had a very successful event called Spring Into Green, and people come to Los Gatos for an experience. And yes, it's shopping, and yes, it's eating, but it's also gathering. It's the community, and I always think of our friend Walt Disney. When I was a kid, I went to Disney World and Disneyland so many times, I can't even count, and I have this obsessive compulsiveness about the cleanliness of things in our town. And the cleaner the sidewalks, the more plantings, the more, as Ms. Summers said, whether we have, you know, the planter boxes in the parking areas, more street sweeping, those kinds of things, I am all for it, because we are bringing a lot of people into the community. We have to obviously maintain just that, but we want it to be nice. We want them to come, because it's a pretty place, and we want to make sure that our community sparkles more than other communities. I guess I'm just biased in that regard, and I'm looking forward to more discussion on the subject from other council members. So, anybody else want to jump? So anybody else want to jump in? Marsha Jensen, would you like to say something?
I would like to say something. Thank you. Thank you for the report. I understand this is not an action item, so that we're not doing anything deceiving. I, I do think it's good to do the power washing. I remember when I did my first pitch to Chamber about a business improvement district, I suggested that one of the easy things they could do was finance power washing, and they'd see results. So for the property owners out there that aren't convinced yet, there's something you could do. But of course, the town will do what it's going to do to make the sidewalks look better. With respect to the planter boxes, I just wanted to throw out an idea that I had. I'm sure it'll be controversial, but it's an idea. And it, it's interesting to me that the people that have adopted those boxes, many of them have not kept up with it, such that the town is taking care of them. And my idea is that the way some of those boxes are situated along North Santa Cruz, I'm wondering whether it makes any sense at all, and again, this is an idea, to convert some of them into seating, so that you'd have a little mini parklet that we've already got the infrastructure for. You might like put a cafe table, you might put seating around, and maybe alternate planting and seating. But anyway, that's my giant idea, and I just want to throw it out there because this is a meeting where I can't. So hopefully, people will think about that. Other than that, I have nothing.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of those, there's no wrong answer kinds of things. Everything's great, but you have to do, when you have this, these number of things and you have the competing interests and items, you have to like prioritize. And as the Vice Mayor pointed out, we're not making decisions, we're just giving input. So I will start by saying that there's nothing in this list that is a bad thing. And I see all of these things as ultimately being the responsibility, both the work that needs to be done and the financing from the town, the businesses, and the property owners. But that's ultimately. So right now, tonight, my, my priority would be the, the power washing, the cleaning of the sidewalks. That's the kind of thing, that's the thing I see the most, I hear about the most. And then, from a secondary point of view, second thing, and that's not something, it is a thing I see, but just not as much, from the report, and from the mayor, and from the community, I never thought about the fact that we need to clean up the weeds and overgrowth in the parking lot. Because that's something that, you know, it's just not done. It's not like we need more flowers in the planter boxes, or a different kind, or more watering and so forth. That's a thing that's not being done. So what I chose are the two items that stand out the most, the parking lot and their flowers slash grass weeds, no flowers, grass weeds, and the power washing, number one.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? Seeing none, I will throw in one more comment. I look forward to this list coming back at budget time, when we can decide what we want to allocate moving forward. And we will go on and close this and go to a vote that we will, I will make a motion to accept the report. And we will do a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Seok.
I'll second, and then I'll vote yes.
Okay. So second from Councilmember Seok, and a yes. Councilmember Spector?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rennie?
Yes.
All right. Passes unanimously. We accept the report. Thank you very much to staff for your work on this. We'll move on to item number 11, which is the request of a waiver of the traffic impact mitigation fees for Mariposa Montessori School. Mr. Morley, you'll be handling the report this evening.
I will.
Thank you.
So our, our town code has a section that covers traffic impact fees. The traffic impact fees are levied on projects where there's a change in use that cause, that could create a, a potential increase in traffic in the town. The idea behind the traffic impact fees is to do exactly that, pay for the impact of those additional vehicle trips through a process where we've established the cost for those individual trips, and that money goes to, to addressing those specific projects on the list over the course of time. At times, we, we hear some feedback on that, on the cost of the traffic impact fees. In this particular case, Montessori, Mariposa Montessori preschool had submitted an application where they wanted to increase the enrollment in, in their school, which would create that, that fee for which the town would look to be recovering the cost. Because it's a nonprofit school, and because there's a, a big dynamic with preschools that are no longer going to be providing service over the next year, the Mariposa Mon, Montessori School asked for a waiver on this particular fee. The code allows for the council to grant, grant a waiver of the fee for all or some of the fee if they so desire, given extenuating circumstances. Staff's recommendation is that those extenuating circumstances exist in this particular case, and so we've brought it here for, for your hearing tonight. And that concludes my report, and we're here to support your discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morley. Questions of staff at this time? Mr. Rennie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, it's, they're increasing by somewhere between 50 to 70 students, or are they increasing from 50 to 70?
The increase is 20 students from 50 to 70.
Okay. That wasn't clear. And that, just an increase of 20 students is going to generate 80 vehicles?
Yeah. And if you, if you do the math on that, so a parent goes to drop their kid off in the morning and then goes home, that's two, two trips, and then the same thing in the afternoon. So that's four trips per kid, per day. So the, the math is 80 trips a day.
And, okay, second question. I think maybe it was in the justification letter, there's three other preschools that are closing, and two of them are kind of far away. So it would be like attracting more traffic to the area, but one of them was over by Fisher, which is essentially the same, same area if we think about traffic issues. And I think they said that one had 100 students in it. So we would be increasing 20 here, but there's already losing 100 students over there. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that sounds like five-fold decrease for just a small increase, then?
Yeah. In the short term, remember that that property will retain the, those number of trips for whatever future use occurs there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions at this time? We will go to the public. And a question I have for staff, we have one of the representatives of the Mariposa School. Do they get three minutes on this? Okay. All right. We will call up Leila Baharanian.
My name is Leila Baharanian. I am a resident of Town of Los Gatos and a member of, a volunteer member of Board of Directors at Mariposa Montessori. I don't have any financial incentive to be here tonight. We moved to this neighborhood in 2010 with back then our four-year-old son in pursuit of high-quality education and a nurturing community. And of course, we have been met by those. And ever since, we have seen many other young families moving here for the exact reason. Our son is in Fisher right now, and we have two daughters also at Mariposa Montessori. And most recently, another friend is coming down. They are moving from Silver Creek to Los Gatos in exactly the same pursuit for high, high-quality education and nurturing community, to find themselves on a waitlist of 40-plus students at Mariposa's, Mariposa School for their, right now, one and a half-year-old son, who is going to become two in September, and they hope to register him. That's essentially a very palpable reason that we are, one of the very palpable reasons that we are asking for this expansion. I also have a letter from another parent. The subject is "In Favor of Los Gatos Preschool Expansions Without a Traffic Fee." This is a parent from Green Hill that got closed, closed to Fisher. The topic, I mean, the, the email reads, and I abbreviated it a little bit, "To the members of the Los Gatos Transportation Commission, this year sadly marks the final school year of Green Hill's preschool, a trusted and treasured early childhood educator in Los Gatos for more than 50 years. Unfortunately for our family and about 100 other children at this school, this means we need to find another preschool for our three-year-old daughter. As we search for another high-quality preschool in Los Gatos, our family and the parents of the other displaced Green Hill students have been faced with preschools that have extensive waitlists and preschools that operate more like a daycare without a specific focus on early childhood education. As our local Los Gatos preschools like Mariposa Montessori, Little Oak, and Grace Preschool look to expand to accommodate more students displaced by Green Hill's closing, we urge you to reconsider the proposed traffic impact fee of $100,000-ish. These schools simply cannot afford this fee, and neither do the parents, who are already paying upwards of $10,000 to $15,000 a year for preschool tuitions. This school should be focusing on using funds to hire the best teachers and upgrade the facilities to benefit the students. Please help us bring more high-quality, early childhood education opportunities to our local community. The future of community depends on your decision. Thank you for your time and consideration." This is from Angela and Chris Mueller, and I appreciate your time, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hillary Ziegelboim.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Hillary Ziegelboim. I'm a Los Gatos resident and president of the Board of Directors at Mariposa. First, let me say that my position is also voluntary, and I have no financial incentive to be here. Mariposa is a nonprofit preschool located on the back of Faith Lutheran, and we've been operating there since 2005. Along with the support of our property owner, we're in the process of applying to amend our existing CUP to expand the enrollment by 20 students. In recent months, three different Los Gatos preschools have announced closure by the end of this academic year. These announcements created an extensive waitlist at Mariposa, and the subsequent anxiety and uncertainty communicated to us by Los Gatos parents prompted us to apply for the expansion. With an already existing vacant classroom to utilize and a parking lot with ample space to accommodate the change, Mariposa can help with this urgent community need as soon as the 2019-2020 school year. However, during the application process, we learned that the traffic impact fee would be imposed by the town would be around $75,000, an amount our nonprofit preschool simply cannot afford to pay. Incurring the fee is prohibitively burdensome, will exhaust the majority of Mariposa's savings, and could leave Mariposa exposed to, to financial risk and jeopardy, the worst-case scenario being an inability to fulfill financial obligations and shutting its doors. Such a result would be antithetical to the purpose behind seeking the requested expansion. We approached the policy committee earlier this year, and it was their recommendation to bring the discussion to Town Council to request an exemption of the traffic impact fee. The committee cited Town Code 15.70.030, which states that "In unusual circumstances, the town reserves the right to deviate from the policy as may be approved by the Town Council. We believe that the closure of three Los Gatos preschools in one year and the financial burden of the traffic fee on a small nonprofit school trying to expand to meet the needs of its residents is just such an unusual circumstance." On a personal note, my husband and I also moved here five years ago to raise our boys in a community with exceptional public schools. We've got two boys at Van Meter. That's the case for so many of the residents in town. And I'm here mostly because a fee that prevents preschools from being able to serve the demand in our town does not seem to be in line with the values of our town. And not unrelated is the, the agenda item with Governor, Governor Newsom's support of universal early childhood education for all children in the state. So it doesn't seem in line with the state of California as well. Many, many of these people on our waitlist are longtime Los Gatos residents, some are business owners, and all of them are extremely concerned. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Last card I have is Kirsten Dawson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members. My name is Kirsten Dawson. I also serve on the Board of Directors as a volunteer with no financial incentive to be here. My two daughters attend Mariposa Montessori's preschool. Late last year, Green Hill's preschool announced they would be closing at the end of the 2018, 2018 academic year, leaving approximately 100 Los Gatos families looking for a new preschool. A few months later, Harker Preschool announced that it would not reopen next year, and Harwood Hills Country Day School closed its doors, giving families just a few days' notice to look for enrollment elsewhere. We're not sure how many additional families were impacted by the closing of the last two schools, but we know that approximately 100 students were affected at Green Hill's. As a result of the three preschool closures, Mariposa now has an extensive waiting list of families hoping to attend our preschool starting in the fall. And almost all of them are Los Gatos residences. Many alternative preschools in Los Gatos are either cooperative or religiously affiliated. For the families in our community who have dual-working parents and require a quality early childhood education option with flexible hours, cooperatives are not a realistic option. Likewise, many families prefer a secular preschool rather than one with a religious affiliation, especially if it differs from their own beliefs. To foster, maintain a healthy, vibrant, and diverse citizenry, communities must provide secular preschool options. Mariposa is uniquely poised to offer such services, as it attracts a global and diverse student body and has no religious affiliation. Although we do lease our space from a religious organization, we do not provide religious instruction, and we have no ties to the church other than a landlord-tenant relationship. Without going into great detail, waiving the traffic fee impact in this case also aligns Mariposa's expansion with several goals, policies, and action items of the adopted Los Gatos 2020 general plan. More specifically, in Section 12(c) of the general plan entitled "Youth Services," it states that "Having community activities and services catering to young persons 18 years of age or younger is important for family in Los Gatos. The Town of Los Gatos strives to be a youth-friendly community and recognizes that youth services must be identified and developed to foster a healthy and active environment for youth growing up in Los Gatos." It goes on to state that "Almost 30% of all households in Los Gatos have at least one youth under the age of 18. Young persons under the age, age of 18 represent approximately 20% of the total population in Los Gatos, and youth represent the future of Los Gatos. And providing and maintaining a service to youth continues to be important to the town." The only thing preventing Mariposa from meeting the needs of some of these residents is the traffic fee associated with expanding. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Rennie has a question for you.
Thank you. I'd like, I'd like to ask a question of somebody, and I guess you're the last one, but maybe the, the president's the better person if, if, with the mayor's indulgence. Um, I, I had a couple of questions. I wanted to better understand kind of how it's operating. So this area is obviously pretty heavily impacted by parents taking kids to, to Van Meter and Fisher. What time does, do parents typically drop off for you? I would guess you don't have a single bell time. It's spread over time. Is it at the same time? How, how is it spread out compared to when there's really bad traffic there?
So I live on Los Gatos Boulevard, so I'm right in the middle of the morning, and it affects me greatly. But Mariposa on Ferris Avenue, what's nice is that we have a car line that operates entirely within our parking lot. We have a really large parking lot, the Faith Lutheran Church. So the cars pull in, and we, anyone who parks or does this car line, it, it happens completely within the parking lot of the school. And we also have staggered drop-off times. So we have an early drop-off for working parents who want to drop their kids off anytime after 8:00 a.m. and before 9:15, when official class starts. So you have parents coming all throughout that hour and 15 minutes. And then our car line operates between 9:00 and 9:15. And, and the reason we chose those hours, we're specific to Van Meter, Blossom Hill, and Fisher. We're, we have those times because they don't compete with the times of the other drop-offs at the school. So, so it's staggered between an hour and 15 minutes in the morning. And then the afternoon's staggered between four hours, between noon and 4:00 p.m.
And then if I could follow up on that, that question a little bit, I would guess there might be parents that have kids dropped off at preschool and also are going over to Van Meter or Fisher. More likely.
Yeah.
Van Meter than Fisher, probably. Are you aware, you know, is, is there, are there parents like that? How many are there approximately? Is it a small percentage, a medium percentage?
You know, I was trying to get exact percentages of our current school community, just to give, to guesstimate if we added 20, if the percentage would be in a line, because we have probably 15% of our population that walk, that are neighborhood people that walk their kids and then walk them to Van Meter or Blossom Hill. To have an older sibling at one of those schools, you know, I'm going to guess it's over 50% of our preschool parents.
So the parents are already driving into that area anyway.
Right. I mean, I've got two at Van Meter and one at, at Mariposa. So it's pretty common that they've got older siblings in the surrounding schools.
And then my last question, you started to answer, what, do you have any kind of program? And then my last question, you started to answer, do you have any kind of programs encouraging parents to, to walk their kids? They're probably too young to ride their bikes, I guess, but
Right.
Walk their kids to, to school?
So I'll tell you that I'm very familiar with the Safe Rides to School because of Van Meter. And I think the reason that we haven't been as successful encouraging it in Mariposa is because we do draw from a more diverse community of residents from Campbell and San Jose, and that stretch of Kennedy doesn't have a sidewalk. So even me personally, it's kind of a longer obscure route to stay on the side, the safe side of getting the kids to our school. So we don't have an official program, but it is something that I'm invested and committed to, to having.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. I see no more questions. Vice Mayor, questions? Okay, none from her. Thank you very much. All right, we'll close the public hearing and move on to discussion. And I will begin by saying, this report brought back fond memories for me, probably Councilmember Seok, as well, as our kids attended Greenhill's together. And all I can remember is that "Witch's Brew" song that they used to sing. And it just warms my heart. As much as I personally would love to take the $75,000 to clean our sidewalks, I would go ahead and make a motion that we approve the waiver for the traffic mitigation fees in this case. I think this is so important for our community and our education in the community. So I'll go ahead and make that motion. We have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Rennie?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment, since I was asking all the questions. I mean, I agree, this is definitely very good for the community, and it's clear that we need to expand. I also, you know, a lot of times, we put in, in place sort of equations for these traffic mitigations, and staff doesn't have a lot of leeway and discretion, you know, kind of you apply the formula and say, "Well, sorry, you owe this." And the reason I was asking a lot of questions was, you know, in my mind, I'd like to apply a little discretion. So it, it sounds like you're trying to not bring people in when the traffic is really bad in that area, which is, I, is important to me. I think that's a good step. You're, you have some encouragement of getting people out of the cars, so, so I agree with that. The traffic mitigation fees is important. You know, if you're bringing more cars to the area, Speaker even mentioned, there's no sidewalk on, on Kennedy. We'd love to pay for a sidewalk on Kennedy, but it's probably $1 million to go, you know, six, eight blocks, whatever the distance is. And these, this, you know, this would be a good way to collect money to do that. But I, you know, so there, there's both sides to the equation, and that's why, you know, I asked all the questions. But I will be supporting the motion, because I think it's, it is a good idea. And I think that, like I said, you, you've sort of mitigated the impacts already with offsetting the times and, and trying to get more people to walk.
Councilmember Seok?
Thank you. I'll also be supporting the motion, but I wanted to just put on record the reasons for it. I don't want this flood of waivers for impact fees to come all of a sudden. And I think the circumstances surrounding this case, one, it's a nonprofit institution for, and given the closures that are happening, I'm somewhat surprised that three are happening immediately. And there's, there's a significant need. But I just want to make sure that staff understands that I appreciate that this is being brought to us, because we do take these impact fees significantly. There, there, we need it. And I don't want it to be, I want it to be absolutely clear that there's extenuating circumstances for this exception, and that this isn't something that I'm, I hope to look at on a regular basis.
Vice Mayor?
I agree that I will be supporting the motion. I do think that this is unusual, and I don't plan on granting exceptions to everybody that doesn't like the impact fee. But there, there are circumstances that have been brought to our attention that make this reasonable in my mind. And so, for this occasion, I will be supporting the motion. And I want to say to the mayor that I'm sad about Greenhill's as well, because it's been there so long that even my kids went there.
It's a wonderful organization. All right. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. It will, we'll do the roll call vote. Councilmember Seok?
Aye.
Councilmember Spector?
Aye.
I will say aye. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Rennie?
Aye.
So it passes unanimously. Thank you for coming in. Congratulations. And we will move on to council matters. We'll start with Councilmember Seok.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Spector?
Since our last meeting, the policy committee met, and it discussed several matters, including demolition, the, I have to look at my notes. We just discussed so much. BNP's, demolition, and the, this was put on the agenda by the chair, the timing of presentations by the appellant and the applicant in appeals before the Town Council.
All right. Since our last regular meeting, I attended the West Valley Sanitation Board of Directors meeting, the Treatment Plant Advisory Committee meeting in San Jose, and the, what we call the Santa Clara Valley Water Commission meeting. I have nothing of significance to report. Vice Mayor?
I attended the policy committee meeting, along with Councilwoman Spector.
Mr. Rennie?
Thank you. My list is a little long. I'll just give you the list and not the details. Lafco met on 4-3. I, for Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority, I did a video interview that was, they created a video from on 4-4. Also, I attended their Risk Oversight Committee meeting on 4-8, and on 4-10, I come in, attended the board meeting. I also attended the VTA Board of Directors meeting on 4-4, and the Cities Association Legislative Action Committee, their selection committee and their board on 4-11. And on 4-14, I attended Spring Into the Green with most of the other council members.
Oh, yes, Spring Into Green. Thank you. All right, that concludes our meeting this eve, this evening. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. Good night.